Good evening, everyone. With this meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board, please come to order. It is July 25th, 2017, and the time is 6:08 PM. Seated in front of you tonight, from my left, are Director Stephanie Fortner, Director Heather Douglas, Director Mike Rostafi, myself, Robert Gerhart, Director Jim Burgett, Director Jessica Craig, and Superintendent Schools, Dr. Kate McGuire. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, before you tonight is the agenda as it's been printed. Are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I move that we accept the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? The agenda has been approved, six to zero. Next up on our agenda is audience opportunity to address the school board. We do have one person that signed up to address the school board, so I will read our statement that we give before this opportunity. The Osseo School Board provides an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board, and we have one speaker so far who wishes to address the board tonight. Before we start, I'll highlight a few of the guidelines for this item on the agenda. When called upon, please state your name and topic. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific members or to any person who is not a member of the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll provide a 30-second notice before your time is up, and longer time may be granted at the discretion of the board chair. The board administration will listen to comments and ask clarifying questions if needed. The board chair may delegate responsibility to the superintendent or the superintendent's designate to follow up with the speaker within a few days following the meeting. Comments and interactions between board members and the public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, and civil. Speakers may not address criticism toward an individual district employee, as such concerns should be directed privately to the employee's supervisor or higher-level administrator. So with that, I would like to welcome Denise Butler to the microphone. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Denise Butler. I am a parent. She's seven years old. She will be going to the third grade. Currently goes to Weaver Lake Elementary. In the work that I do, I hear it's the theme diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, employers are fighting to stay true to that theme. And I do it every day in my work, but it hits home when your daughter comes home from school one day and she goes, "Mommy, are there no black teachers in this world?" And I was like, wow. That put a shock in me for a moment, and then I was like, unfortunately, the amount of teachers of color, they're not readily available in the school district that you reside in, nor at the school that you go to, but there are teachers of color in the world. And because of that, I decided I'm going to make that my agenda, to come to the school board and talk about that is a serious, 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 serious issue. The lack of diversity, equity, and inclusion that we have in the school board, even the equity process in this meeting, the time that it takes place, the location, and having it be accessed and provide an opportunity for more parents to show up here tonight and be able to testify. I'm not here alone tonight. There's lots and lots of parents standing here with me in spirit, and that speak truth to what I'm saying and agree to what I'm saying. We lack the diversity in the curriculum and equity in the curriculum, inclusion in the curriculum. We lack it in the representation of the teachers that are in there, the staff that are in the schools, because study will show that when people are learning for people that look like them, that they can resonate with, they are better and suited in a better learning environment. And this school board really needs to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers tonight? All right, seeing none. Next up on the agenda, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I usually begin my report by celebrating the accomplishments of students and staff in the points of pride. We'll pick that up again when school starts. I will begin, though, with our mission, since it is the reason that we come together, to do our work on behalf of the children in our communities. And our mission is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. I'd like to begin my report tonight just by introducing some new cabinet leaders that you'll see at the table here, and I'll begin with Dr. Steve Flisk. Dr. Flisk replaces Aston O'Sai as one of the Assistant Superintendents in the Division of Leadership Teaching and Learning. Mr. Flisk most recently served in the Minneapolis Public Schools as Deputy Chief of Schools and an Associate Superintendent. Prior to joining MPS, Steve served in the Chicago Public Schools for 19 years as a high school mathematics teacher, principal of both the elementary and high school level, and as an area instruction officer. Steve earned his Bachelor's Degree in Psychology from the University of Illinois-Champaign-Urbana Urbana. He holds a Master's Degree in Education from St. Xavier University and a Master's Degree in Mathematics from Chicago State University, and received his Doctorate in Urban Education Leadership from the University of Illinois at Chicago. Together, the Assistant Superintendents, Ms. Partpart, Dr. Heil, and Dr. Flisk, are responsible for the oversight of all the schools and district-level departments, including research, assessment, and accountability, curriculum instruction, and educational standards, student services, and educational equity. Also joining our team now for the new school year is Mr. Tim Palmetier, succeeding Margaret Weston as our General Counsel. Mr. Palmetier comes to us with 20 years of experience advising and representing public schools. Since 2008, Tim has been with the Kennedy and Graveney Firm in Minneapolis, which specializes in providing general and special counsel and consulting to cities, townships, and schools throughout Minnesota. He has extensive knowledge and experience in student-related matters, labor and employment issues, data privacy, special education due process, and open-meeting law compliance. He's a skilled litigator, having represented public schools in grievance arbitrations, administrative hearings, and federal district court, and the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals. So, welcome to our two new cabinet leaders. Also, I want to report on an event that occurred yesterday, highlighting another staff member who just retired, and that's Suzette Erickson Day in the city of Brooklyn Park. Yesterday, the city of Brooklyn Park honored one of our esteemed principals by naming July 24th, 2017, Suzette Erickson Day. Prior to leaving the district at the end of last year, Suzette served students and families as a teacher at Park Brook Elementary, and then for the past 15 years as principal at Crestview Elementary. The proclamation, which was developed by Brooklyn Park Fire Chief Ken Pearlman, and it was presented by the mayor, they noted several of Suzette's outstanding contributions to the city of Brooklyn Park and to the community, including supporting community events like the National Night Out, coordinating the construction of a new playground at Crestview along with the Minnesota Vikings and Target Corporation. Suzette was also recognized for playing a key role in the development and implementation of Brooklyn Park's award-winning Family Reunification Center, where children can be reunited with their families in the event of a school crisis that requires evacuation. Mayor Lundie noted that Suzette will always be remembered for her kindness, professionalism, positivity, willingness to help, and commitment to excellence. The city of Brooklyn Park will miss her, and we will miss her, too. Lastly, I want to report on the District 279 Brooklink Internship Program. The Brooklink interns are finishing up their work experience for the summer. Brooklink is a summer youth employment program currently operated by the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth, which aims to prepare employers to engage with next-generation workers. By offering summer internships, the program provides youth facing barriers to employment an opportunity to gain work skills, job experience, and build their professional network. This is the third year of the internship, and there are many, many employers, not just us, many employers involved in this, and it recorded its largest participation to date. Last year was Osseo Area Schools' first time working with Brooklink, and we hosted 10 interns. This year, the number of our interns increased to 14. Brooklink students are interning in a range of departments from human resources to technology and even nutrition services. In addition, all the interns are serving at Freedom Schools at least once a week, which you'll hear a little bit more about later in the meeting. Our interns are eager to gain confidence, courage, and competence to become leaders and learn about the workforce. Zinni Abdo, a Brooklink intern working with Communications Director Barb Olson, wrote this article for my superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda are school board reports. So far, I believe we only have one. That'll be a June 20th, 2017 Policy Committee Meeting Report. Director Douglas.
Thank you. The School Board Policy Committee met here at the Educational Service Center at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 20th, 2017. Board members Bob Gerhart, Jim Burgett, and myself, Heather Douglas, attended. Carrie Larson, Community Education Coordinator for Facilities and Volunteers; Andy Bedeau, Digital Learning and Instructional Media and Coordinator; Colleen Fairbanks, Supervisor in Food and Nutrition; Superintendent Kate McGuire; Incoming General Counsel Tim Palmetier; and General Counsel Margaret Weston also attended. The committee reviewed the proposed amendments to the Wellness Policy Number 533. Changes in federal law have required amendments to the current wellness policy. Groups of internal and external stakeholders have been meeting to draft a policy and procedures that comply with the requirements and is consistent with the needs of the school district and our communities. The committee is recommending the policy for first reading. The committee also reviewed the recommendation to combine the existing policies prohibiting bullying, hazing, harassment, and violence by students. After discussing additional changes to the proposal and to the policy prohibiting harassment and violence for staff members, the committee directed staff to incorporate some changes in language and bring the policies forward at the next policy committee meeting. The proposed revised procedures for Policy 5924, I'm sorry, Nine Too Far, not 5924, volunteers were also reviewed. The committee concurred that the procedures as revised were consistent with the policy and provided clear notice to the families about procedures used for screening volunteers. After discussion of a possible amendment to Policy 515, Appendix B, to include an additional category of limited directory data, the committee declined to recommend the changes to the full board. The next policy committee meeting will be Tuesday, September 26th.
Thank you. Board members, are there any other reports? All right, hearing none, we will move on to our presentation for tonight, Summer Learning, presented by Carrie Cave and others, I believe.
All right, good evening. Director Gerhart, Director McGuire, school board members and cabinet members. My name is Carrie Cave, and I'm the Assistant Director in our Community Engagement Department. And myself and three other colleagues are going to be sharing some of the summer learning that's been happening for students, adults in our community, and staff throughout the So the outcome of our presentation tonight is really just to give you information of summer learning that's been happening for all of those different groups that I referenced at the start. It's amazing how many people are learning through the summer months, and we want to make sure that everyone is reminded of that, that we are moving things and still engaging lots of learners during the months when summer vacation is occurring. So we're going to get started with students. I'm going to share with you with that for this year. This summer, we've served over 5,000 students, again, in programming here in Osseo Area Schools. And that is an amazing number to think through what we are offering for our families and our students throughout our community. Students are learning social skills, emotional skills, getting physical and academic stimulation throughout the summer, and also just having great caring adults that they're engaging with in multiple programs. So some highlights that I want to share, one of them is our pre-K summer learning still continues, so really focusing on those early, pre-kindergarten students, and you'll get to hear a little bit about a couple new programs as well. So first and foremost, some of the numbers that we have. So Kid Stop again is serving over 160 future K students this summer at four different sites, so they're getting to experience summer learning within those settings. Also, our enrichment team has put together some great camps for three- through six-year-olds that are happening. Some of the examples that stuck out to me, Extreme Engineers, Storybook Island, Jungle Adventures, Dino Art Camp, and Water Play are just a few that kids got to engage in the summer for anywhere from three days to five days during the week at Cedar Island, for instance. And then also, for the first time in over 10 years, our Early Childhood and Family Education Program is offering parents and children ages birth to kindergarten classes at Willow Lane Childhood Center this summer. So of the 40 families enrolled, 28 are brand-new to the Early Childhood and Family Education Program. So that's a huge success factor. They've never participated in those programs in the past. And the goal was to really focus outreach in order to increase participation for families of color and families with young children in the Willow Lane neighborhood. So that was kind of the focus of the programs. We're greatly encouraged by the response and interest from families to participate, and consider the number of new families registered a huge measure of success. I should have brought a Kleenex, excuse me. So the next one, moving on to Camp Rocks. So this summer, Camp Rocks has had over 850 students participating in that program, which is up 100 from last summer. We once again have three sites providing students with some great summer learning. Students are enrolled through targeted services programming and are supported by an amazing team of over 100 dedicated staff. Many of those staff have worked at Camp Rocks. I have a couple of staff that are working at Elm Creek this summer, for instance, and they've had a different Camp Rocks shirt on every day of the program. They love to show that history, and the fashion changes in color have been great to watch over the years as well. One of them came in with beads on the bottom of their shirt today, so it was fun to kind of watch the different progression and the dedication there. Thank you. So some of the highlights from that program this summer have included, we've had an author visit one of the sites and share with the students, they got books from the author. And we've also had a collaboration with an organization called In Sports, and they came and did a day just of physical activity and health and wellness with the students as well. So it was great to see out in the field, music was playing loud, kids were running around, getting exercise, and engaging in those different opportunities as well. Another large program within our district is Kid Stop. So this summer, Kid Stop has increased about 12% again over last summer. So enrollment continues to increase in those programs and have lots more children and families engaging in that. There are about 160 staff that work on a daily basis with those students to just make sure that they're feeling the excitement of summer and the energy of summer. We continued this summer with the Pick Your Day schedule and have seen an increase in that. That was brand-new last year, so families can literally register for the whole summer calendar one day at a time. So if you need to be gone on a week of vacation, you're gone for that week of vacation. You can just sign up for one day a week or five days a week, so really trying to create some flexibility there. The theme this summer, again, is Dream Big, to encourage students to pursue their dreams, engage in continuous learning over the summer months. So great adventures are being had by those students. And just some great partnerships that Kid Stop engages in during the summer include working with the U of M Athletes, connection to support Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation this summer is the community service project they're working on, a continued collaboration with Lifetime Fitness, a new collaboration with Methnasium, and a few others, just to name a few. Another area of growth in our district is middle-level programs. So we continue to see growing in this group of students that are engaging in learning. An example of that, ozone, for instance, the population of students that was enrolled last year was about 30. This year, we have over 60 kids that are coming every day to the program, so continued growth in those programs as well. Also, our 21st Century Sites, Brooklyn Middle School and Northview, have both seen increased enrollments as well. So Brooklyn Middle School registered over 175 students for programming this summer as well. So it's been great to see that increase there. And then we also have the SPOT Program, which is the middle-school-level version of Kid Stop. A lot of families will know what is that. And we have over 216 contracts for sixth-to-eighth graders, for instance, enrolled in that program, too. So again, a great program growth for age group within our district. Also want to just get a quick plug-in for our ABE graduation that happened after school was out as well. So on June 21st, the graduation ceremony occurred at Hennepin Technical College. The ceremony honored 28 graduates from this past year, featuring Ibi Gilmore, a retired Osseo Area Schools instructor, or educator, and current ABE instructor, excuse me. She was the keynote speaker. So she shared a message with the students, just talking to them about never giving up and pursuing education no matter what. Several of you were in attendance, which was great to hear about. And then this past year, Osseo Adult Basic Ed has served over 1,100 adults seeking to improve their English, obtain a high school credential, and strengthen their basic education skills here in Osseo. So another great program that kind of has its end after the end of the school year. I am going to pass it off to a colleague here, Dr. Revill Strum. Will be sharing some more, a little bit about students and some of the other learning that's been happening here in the district.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you, Director Gerhart, and Directors of the Board, Superintendent McGuire, and our esteemed colleagues that we get to work with daily on the cabinet. Good to be with you all. I'm going to be brief, share just a few things that the Department of Educational Equity has had the opportunity to support around learning this summer, and of course, Freedom Schools is one of our highlights. Probably the best way to describe Freedom Schools is I'm going to ask Barb to come up and help me exchange out of this, to be able to share just a brief, one-minute video with you that highlights some of the work. Now, some kids in the Osseo School District are spending their summer focusing on reading and community engagement.
Good morning! I love you! I love you! I love you! Now, that's one way to get fired up for a morning reading session at Fair Oaks Elementary in Brooklyn Park. About 200 students are taking part in a six-week multicultural literacy program called Freedom Schools, which emphasizes civic engagement.
We are giving kids a glimpse of what it's like to be successful, what it's like to just be an important member of the community, being able to make change, being able to advocate and address needs that our community is facing, and then that kids have a voice.
And the school brings in guest readers, including Dr. Ravette Jackson with the National Urban Alliance for Effective Education.
As stated, approximately 200 students enroll in this program. Often, we have up to 200 students more begging to get into the program. Our specific data, you can see here, this year, we wound up, after attrition, with 185 students that are going to make it through the program. This is our last week of the program. Matter of fact, our finality is the 27th of this month, so Thursday, at 3:00 at Osseo Senior High. And please accept that as an invitation to come and be part of that if you have the time. We do have several levels, Levels 1, 2, and 3, with a total of 185 students. The nice thing is 78% of these scholars attend racially-isolated schools, and since 2014, Osseo Area Schools has hosted children's defensive and freedom schools. In this program, some of the really big highlights is that 94% of the students in grades 3 through 6, those are the ones that we assessed, who participated in 2016, actually saw an increase in reading achievement throughout that programming in six weeks. So quite exciting, measurable results for our students in that program. In addition to Freedom Schools, we have provided some staff learning opportunities. Two primary ones are connected to the Department of Educational Equity, are our Summer Institute Learning with AVID, which is advancement by individual determination, and our Beyond Diversity trainings. AVID's going on, the Summer Institute is occurring as we speak, and you see three schools that are sending various staff members who support the AVID programming within their buildings. These are full-day trainings that they're experiencing at the Minneapolis Convention Center, so it's a local training, but with a national implication, with national trainers supporting us. So we're able to send them here instead of having to send them across the country to be able to participate in this work. And secondly, for adult learning, we have our Beyond Diversity. There's been two unique Beyond Diversity trainings that occurred this year. We have 38 individuals in our technology area that participated, and a Beyond Diversity solely for the technology area in our district. Then we had 86 individuals that combined three different areas, food nutrition services, maintenance services, and business services, who participated. And the last slide that I'm going to offer for you before I invite my colleague, Mr. Willie, from CIES to come forward, is just some of the ways that we measure this impact in personal, local, and immediate stories that are provided from us. And I think Michelle, who is a building engineer at Osseo Education Center, offered these words. In her words, she says, "I believe in courageous conversation. Our district needs more learning on diversity, so we can be strong together as one and teach different cultures, so we can all move forward. I can, I, I hope I can have the opportunity to continue to grow, learn more, and be a part of the acting group, and not the group that just wants to do nothing and sit on the conveyor belt. This is our time to make a difference." Thank you for letting me share the work that we're involved in. Jeremy?
As we consider the Clear Model, it is evident that this tool has provided our district with the foundation for transformational system change to occur. Through its intersection with the high operational practices from the National Urban Alliance, teachers and leaders within our system had an opportunity to engage in professional learning that has the potential to accelerate the transformation of instructional practice in every classroom for each student. This summer in June, teachers and leaders had a chance to participate in one of three three-day professional learning cohorts. In grade-band-specific learning groups, educators had the chance to actually engage in culturally-responsive learning activities themselves, strategies that they could tangibly take with them and apply in their classrooms with students. At both the onset and the culmination of these three-day training experiences, for what we are calling NUA 1, our initial training for staff members, approximately 200 participants were asked to identify to what extent their beliefs were in alignment with the beliefs of Osseo Area Schools, that through positive relationships, rigorous learning experiences, are created involving higher-order thinking and critical analysis to address real-world After participating in this professional learning, as you can see here, beliefs changed by nearly 17%. Additionally, participants in NUA 1 were asked about the extent to which they felt prepared to utilize culturally-responsive teaching strategies in classrooms with students. Initially, prior to the training, 12.1% of respondents felt prepared to utilize these strategies. At the conclusion of this three-day training, nearly 83% felt prepared to use culturally-responsive teaching strategies in classrooms with students. This marks a shift of nearly 70% as a result of this professional learning experience. In addition to NUA 1, this summer, we offered a second phase of this professional learning experience, which was designed for those who participated in NUA 1 last summer, which we called NUA 2. Nearly 200 staff members participated in this learning experience, which focused on building knowledge, skills, and capacity with culturally-responsive teaching practices. Prior to NUA 2, 75.4% of respondents felt as though they needed more knowledge about culturally-responsive instructional practices. At the close of this training, 93% of participants felt as though they gained such skills to utilize in classrooms with students. Lastly, this slide illustrates that 85% of staff members expressed that they had a high level of investment in culturally-responsive teaching strategies as a mechanism to ensure equitable student achievement. At the conclusion of NUA 2, 100%, nearly every single participant, excuse me, 93% of participants felt as though they gained such skills to utilize in classrooms with students. Lastly, this slide illustrates that 85% of staff members expressed that they had a high level of investment in culturally-responsive teaching strategies as a mechanism to ensure equitable student achievement. At the conclusion of NUA 2, 100%, every single participant stated that this investment increased as a result of this professional learning experience. The second summer learning experience that I'm excited to share with you this evening was provided by the Minnesota Math and Science Partnership, which is a collaborative comprised of 10 educational agencies in the Twin Cities area. This is the second year that our district has participated in this grant-funded professional development opportunity. This June, 45 5th through 12th-grade teachers from Osseo Area Schools participated in this learning experience, which was called Algebrafication. This training was designed to provide teachers with strategies to prepare students for algebraic thinking in the elementary grades all the way through high school. The Blended Learning Collaborative, a group comprised of teacher leaders within Osseo Area Schools, is a collective of teachers looking to learn more about the various ways in which they can effectively weave blended activities into more traditional, face-to-face-type instructional environments. The hope in this group is to continue to develop blended learning opportunities and courses for students to engage in and be successful. When we think- When we think about such opportunities, blending learning experiences serve not only to personalize learning and differentiate instruction, but also focus on the ways in which students can be actively engaged in their own learning, with student choice in where, when, and how they learn. Last year, nearly 25 high school teachers participated in the first collaborative. This summer, over 50 teachers from the elementary, middle, and high school level will join in the second iteration of this group. Osseo teacher leaders had the unique opportunity to further develop their coaching and facilitation skills through the use of Thinking Maps. Thinking Maps are the consistent set of visual patterns linked directly to eight specific thought processes. Among many things, our coaches can help teachers to deconstruct standards to match instruction to the cognitive rigor required. They can also use the maps as protocols to facilitate growth-based conversations, and can train or support our schools, who use these patterns to help all staff and students reach higher levels of critical and creative thinking. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Jill Leneh, Assistant Director of Student Services, who will be sharing more information with you this evening about summer learning experiences for staff members.
Good evening, Chair Gerhart, School Board Members, Dr. McGuire, and Cabinet Members. As Jeremy said, my name is Jill Leneh, and I serve as the district's Assistant Director for Student Services. I get to tell you about some professional development opportunities that haven't taken place yet, but will be starting on July 31st, which is this upcoming Monday. This evening, I will share the information about the professional development opportunities that are tied to our priority work that you can see behind me, focused on restorative As demonstrated in this slide, the restorative practice approach moves us from focusing on rules to a focus on relationships, and from a focus on punishment to one of repair. This summer, staff attending these professional development opportunities will learn how to use a restorative approach as an educator, and how to create a restorative school culture based on the following practices. Acknowledge that relationships are central to building community. Build systems that address misbehavior and harm in a way that strengthen relationships. Focus on harm done rather than only rule-breaking. Provide all school members with opportunities for voice. Engage in collaborative problem-solving. Empower change and growth. And finally, to enhance responsibility. All right. I was hoping I was going to have a little pointer on this one, so I might have to turn away here. Moving away from zero tolerance, the new paradigm in education is moving towards a model that is based on the fact that relationships are central to learning. Restorative practices, when combined with trauma-informed practice, within a Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Framework, PBIS, gives us a model for building, affirming, and repairing relationships. In this slide, you can see the social discipline window, how one responds to discipline. As you can see on the vertical axis, accountability or control moves from low to high, and support moves from, on the horizontal, moves from low to high. In the top-left box, we have a high level of accountability and a low level of support. So an example of what that could look like could be a suspension. The box below that, we have a low level of accountability and a low level of support, and what that might look like in a classroom would be ignoring the behavior. And then we move to the far-right bottom, and that has low accountability with a high level of support, but that, what that might look like is someone doing something for the student. And finally, where we want to go is with restorative, where you see a high level of accountability, but also a very high level of support. This is where we see behavior as needing to be coached, supported, role-played, taught, re-taught, just as we would with a student displaying an academic deficit. Here's where we have a high level of accountability, but it's also paired with a high level of support. Okay. And now I get to talk about what we're offering. Sessions that you see listed will be facilitated by CMRS, Community Mediation and Restorative Services. Our sessions include restorative culture in schools. There's going to be an introduction. It's a four-day foundational course. We'll have that for licensed staff, and we're also offering a four-day foundational for our administrators as well. There is also going to be an introduction to conferencing in circles to respond to conflict, and then there'll also be an advanced offering as well. Social-emotional learning paired with restorative practices at the elementary level. Restorative language in chats. There'll be training on how to do run circles. And then we'll also have a full-day implementation where building administrators and teams can come together and map out a plan on how to implement it within their site. Depending on the session that you, that the staff attend, they might experience talks focused specifically on restorative practices and trauma-informed practices by guest speakers such as Nancy Reisnerberg from the Minnesota Department of Education, Dr. Marcus Sander from Hennepin County, who's in a focus on trauma-informed practice, and also Artika Tyner from University of St. Thomas, who talks about education for social change. As you can see, there are multiple offerings ranging from what we would consider a Tier 1 intervention, for example, restorative language, to what we would consider a Tier 3 intervention, conferencing to repair harm within the PBIS framework. All right. So who's being trained this summer? Sessions run from July 31st through August 17th. We have 10 sessions running. They range from one to four days. We have a total of 274 licensed staff registered, 53 administrators, and 23 educational support professionals. So that's all coming up soon. That concludes my, my portion of the presentation, and I will now open the discussion up to questions for any of the presenters. Thank you.
Board members, any questions?
I do have one for Carrie. What do you attribute the, the increase in participation for the, for the kids' programs?
I guess I would say it's multifaceted, right? So we're doing a lot more marketing of programmings with our sites, so having staff be point people for programs like Camp Rocks and sharing that information with families that would benefit from it, to also, I think, some of our greater flexibility in scheduling, right? So I know that has, the feedback we've gotten from parents has been, I love the fact that I can sign up for field trip days only, for instance, at Kid Stop, or giving my kid that opportunity to do those opportunities with different things. But I also would say it's just, a lot of it is staff attribution, right? So we have some great staff that have done summer program a long time, and their passion. People hear about that from their neighbors, and their friends, and their classmates as well, so I think that's a huge part of why the programs continue to grow too.
Thank you. Board members? Nothing? No? Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Dr. Hillstrom. Thank you, Jill Leneh. Thank you, Jeremy. I think I got everybody. Okay. All right. Next up on the agenda would be our consent agenda. Board members, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to have pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull Item 8F, just for a quick comment.
Okay. 8F. Board members, are there any other items you would like to have separated for, separate consideration? None? Okay. With that, let's move on to Item 8F Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we move into a new budget year with a new school board, I think it will be important to look at our expenditures differently, namely our administrative costs and our overhead. In the past, previous boards have eliminated a third assistant superintendent position in an effort to save money. Moving forward in the months to come, I believe it would behoove us as a board to consider these budget pools carefully. I'm grateful for the work our leaders and administration do, day in and day out, so I don't want that message to get lost. However, with potential deficit spending, it will be important to look at spending differently. Again, to our administrators, thank you so much for all the hard work you do. Thank you, and welcome to Dr. Flisk. I just wanted to mention that briefly, so it can be on the top of our minds moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments?
Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I'm speaking specifically to address the assistant superintendent position. In the coming months, we will start planning the next fiscal year budget, and I will be paying close attention to specific areas where we might be able to make some reductions to make sure we are operating within our means. I believe that the district should have had maybe some more discussion about the future budget, budgetary challenges that we are faced with before we filled this position. But I just also wanted to say thank you for our cabinet members as well, but we need to make sure going forward that we're paying attention to the budget in future.
Okay. Thank you. With, are there any other comments? With that, I will just inject a little comment of my own that just prior to this meeting, the superintendent and I met, we talked about how we would address some of these concerns, a little bit more deeper interest by the, the board going into the next budgeting cycle, and how we're going to incorporate that conversation in time to maybe have, you know, an actual effective impact going into the next budgetary cycle. So you'll be getting more correspondence from the superintendent, and probably me here in the next few days, as we try to ramp up into that, that extra discussion that we haven't necessarily had in the past. So, okay. With that, I will make a motion to accept Item 8F. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Bruguet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Item 8F is accepted on a 6-0 vote. Are there any other items, again, that need to be pulled from the consent agenda for separate consideration? All right, hearing none. I would move that we accept the consent agenda items A through E and G through O. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The remainder of the consent agenda has been accepted on a 6-0 vote. Next up on our agenda for tonight are, are action items. Our first action item is a recommendation for approval, Osseo area schools' long-term facility maintenance LTFM plan, Patricia Magnuson.
And this approval by the school board will provide funding for year two, or next summer, 2018, of our approved 10-year plan that began with the, the work that we're doing this summer. I want to remind the board that long-term facilities maintenance is one of the funding mechanisms made available to school districts to maintain the community's investments in school facilities, grounds, and infrastructure, and that in cooperation with the school board, over several months during fiscal year 2016, Osseo area schools strategically designed a long-term facilities maintenance plan that enables the district to accelerate necessary infrastructure maintenance. And your approval tonight will ensure that the planned funds will be included in the preliminary levy for school board approval in September of 2017, and subsequently, the final levy approval in December of 2017.
All right. Thank you. This is an item that we do need to vote on, I believe? Yes. Yes. Okay. We did things a little bit out of order before. I will make a motion to accept the recommendation for approval for Osseo area schools' long-term facility maintenance plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. With that, the recommendation for approval for Osseo area schools' long-term facility maintenance passes on a 6-0 vote. Next up is 2017 district-wide radon testing results, Patricia Magnuson.
Okay. During the 16-17 school year, Osseo area schools conducted radon testing in all of its school facilities. The testing was done in accordance with the radon testing plan developed by the Minnesota Commissioners of Health and Education. When a school district conducts radon testing, state statute requires that the district share the results at a school board meeting, which is the purpose of this report tonight. The results of the recent testing for Osseo area schools showed that out of more than 2,200 areas tested, 12 areas recorded results at or above the level for which action is recommended. The school district will conduct follow-up sampling in all 12 of these affected areas. We expect that the radon levels will be easily resolved through adjustments to the ventilation system in the affected areas. If radon levels remain at or above the recommended action level in any of the areas, staff will take action to mitigate the presence of radon in those affected spaces. And if the board has any further questions about the district's radon testing, you could speak with the Risk Management Coordinator, Rachel Kohler, who's at the Educational Services Center. And tonight, tonight's action is for the school board to accept the results of the radon testing, to comply with Minnesota Statute 123.571, radon testing.
Thank you. And with that, I would move to accept the results of the 2017 district-wide radon testing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. With that, the 2017 district-wide radon testing results have been accepted on a 6-0 vote. Next up on our action items, recommendation for approval, individual employment contract between Independent School District 279 School Board and Lisa Stockmo, temporary project manager, Ties e-Finance System implementation for July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. Judy McDonald.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Gerhart, School Board Members, and Superintendent McGuire. So on the agenda this evening for school board action is a recommendation for approval of the individual employment contract for Lisa Stockmo. Ms. Stockmo will serve in a temporary assignment as project manager for the Ties Finance Business System Implementation Project. The project she's managing revolves around the conversion of our human resources, payroll, and finance system from the current Ties system to a new system called e-Finance. The new system will deliver more efficiencies, effectiveness, functionality, and reliability, and we are looking at a potential go-live date of July 1st, 2018, or July 1st, 2019, at the very latest. The scope of the project contains six phases that must be completed prior to or just after the implementation. The phases include discovery, where our current business processes are mapped and analyzed in conjunction with the new system, and highlight areas that will require change and/or gaps in the software. Planning phase, where the project plans outlined in detail, and an implementation schedule developed. The system setup occurs after that, where the internal functions of the software and the data mapping is defined. Some of these include system security setup, workflows, reporting setup, table setups, and system rules. And once the system setup is complete, the next three phases include system testing, employee training, and system quality control monitoring. So the employment contract includes an annual salary and provisions for group insurance and fringe benefits, and the contract is within the budget approved by the school board for this spring for the project, and it is the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the employment contract for Lisa Stockmo.
Thank you. And with that, I will move that we approve recommendation for, approve the recommendation for approval, that makes sense. Individual employment contract between Independent School District 279 School Board and Lisa Stockmo, temporary project manager, Ties e-Finance System for July 1st, 2017 through July 30th, 2018. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Bruguet. Any discussion?
Chair Gerhart, I wanted to ask Judy, you said that this program is either going to be implemented next summer or the following summer. So is this contract going to have to be renewed, or is this work expected to be done in one year, and why would we go later?
We expect it to be done in one year. However, the, the implementation itself and the scheduling, some things may be required to implement after the July 1st, and so we'll be looking at it over this year to determine which phases go in which fiscal year. Does that answer your question?
It does, and, and I don't believe we have anything budgeted. This was a one-year budget, I remember the discussion, we were taking some money from someplace and putting it here for one year. If this has to go further, and there's more funds that are needed, where are those going to come from?
I'm, I'm not sure I could answer that question. I would defer to Patricia for that, but we would potentially put it in the budgeting process this, coming up this fall for board approval.
Yeah, I think you're, you're right, Judy. We'd take that through the payer process. If we think there's a likelihood that we'll need to continue that support, we'd bring that through the payer process, the long-range financial planning process, and talk to the board about that throughout that process, which culminates in February of 2018. So we should have a pretty good idea by then where we think we're at. We really want to be thorough on this business process redesign, so that by the time we implement, that work is really well-done.
And I have another question or, or comment. A lot of contracts for this type of implementation is typically a consulting contract that is usually some, a 1099 rather than W-2. We're making this person an employee, doing all the benefits, all those other things that could have long-term implications for us, rather than just a contract on a per-month, per-week, per-hour basis that is driving towards a goal. So I, I know that, I believe we had some discussions about making this a temporary employee, but why are we going that route versus looking at just the contractor, where we don't have to do all of these other potentially long-term items when this is a very short-term project?
There's a, a number of reasons why we... There's a, a number of reasons why we chose to go with employee to begin with. The amount of money that was approved also includes funding for consulting as well because of the scope and the size of the project. However, in this particular case, it was dependent upon who came to the table to offer services and also the cost. And so this was, we believe, the most cost-effective and brought to us the greatest set of talent to manage this project.
Board members, any other questions? Going once, going twice? All right. Hearing, seeing that there's no further comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm not sure what it counts for on that one. Let's try this again. Let's do a show of hands, because I don't think I heard every voice. All, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay. All right. That was good. Okay. So the recommendation for approval for individual employment contract between Independent School District 279 School Board and Lisa Stockmo, temporary project manager, Ties E Finance System Implementation for July first, 2017, through June thirtieth, 2018, is approved on a vote of six to zero, with some difficulty on my part. Next up on our action items are gifts to the district totaling one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand four-hundred-and-nine dollars and four cents. I will move that we accept these gifts. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Of course not. The gifts to the district are graciously accepted in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand four-hundred-and-nine dollars and four cents on a vote of six to zero. Next up are informational items, as read by Director Craig.
I think we have the first reading of school board policies first.
Oh, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry. First reading of school board policies, Tim Palmetier, Revision Policy 533 Wellness. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent McGuire. As Director Douglas reported earlier in the meeting, the policy committee has reviewed proposed amendments to the wellness policy, that's Policy 533 of the district's policies. And this policy has been recommended for first reading by the policy committee. The amended policy is required by federal law. The original wellness policy was adopted in 2006. Since its adoption, subsequent federal legislation and recent federal regulations mandate additional policy and procedural requirements related to student wellness. The proposed amended policy establishes wellness goals related to nutrition, physical activity, and communication with parents. It allows designation of wellness policy leadership, or as we've designated them, wellness coordinators for district schools, and requires public involvement to help ensure equitable health and wellness outcomes. The first reading begins a four-week period for reaction to the proposed policy changes by concerns groups or individuals. After the four-week period, the school board may adopt a policy after a second reading. The proposed policy and procedures related to the implementation of the policy are available on the school district website with the agenda for this meeting. Comments may be directed to the school board or myself. Comments on this policy and related procedures may also be provided online from the school board policy and procedures webpage on the district's school, on the school district's website.
Thank you. And this is for information only, so the board takes no action on it tonight. Thank you for that. And so now, next up is announcements. Director Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A negotiation strategy meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 25th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room N-10 here at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, August 15th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Forum Room at the ESC. The topics will be world's best workforce, strategic plan goal, college and career readiness, career technical program and fiscal year 2019 budget planning, and preparation for preliminary levy for taxes payable in 2018. This meeting will be open to the public. A regular school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Boardroom at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A negotiation strategies meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room N-10 here at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public.
Thank you, Director Craig. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nate? And with that, we are adjourned at 7:02 PM. Thanks, everyone.